Of course, the plasma membrane is impermeable to the plasma protein. Because most of the protein are large, so it cannot pass through the plasma membrane. Um what will happen if the capillary become permeable to plasma protein? First, let's see why this will happen? Why the blood capillary become permeable to plasma protein? One of the example of the increased permeability of the capillary is during inflammation. During inflammation, capillary permeability increase in order to let the fluid to go out of the capillary to the tissue. For the um white blood cells, nitrogen to go out of this cell to the uh out of the blood. And so on. And when the capillary permeability increase, so protein will come out from the capillary, it go to the tissue, to the interstitial. Why this goes edema? Of course, the consequence is edema formation, swelling of the tissue, fluid accumulation in the tissue. Why when the protein come out from the blood vessel and go to the tissue will cause accumulation of fluid in the tissue? Let's see in this video drawing how the uh filtration occur and how edema will develop. So let's see this video. Let's see how filtration occur, how filtration of tissue occurs. To get nutrient and to excrete waste product. And how edema develop? This is a capillary. And we have, of course, inside capillary we have water or plasma. Blood volume fluid. It create a pressure that try to move. Hydrostatic pressure by P. This is means this is hydrostatic pressure, this C means inside the capillary, so this is hydrostatic pressure inside the capillary. Well, we have an opposing force which is hydrostatic pressure in the interstitial. Interstitial fluid. Interstitial fluid. This will also create a pressure, but this is less than the capillary pressure. We have another forces. We have protein here, of course, you know the blood protein, plasma protein. So the protein here create oncotic pressure. It try to throw fluid to itself. This is called oncotic pressure. So this pressure called oncotic pressure. This is because it's inside capillary. As we say inside the capillary, why it's called capillary oncotic pressure? Because it this pressure created by the protein in the capillary. Plasma protein. So it is an opposing force for the capillary hydrostatic pressure. At the same time, we have. Another uh pressure which is. Plasma prote- uh sorry, interstitial. Oncotic pressure. So in order for filtration to happen. The force that. Cause fluid to go outside should be more than that. To um that cause fluid to go inside the blood vessels. Of course, in the arterial end, because the hydrostatic pressure is higher. We have arterial end and venous end. Arterial end. That's why because of this high pressure, the hydrostatic pressure. Near the arterial end of the capillary is higher than the hydrostatic pressure near the venous end. So the fluid go in this direction near the arterial end of the capillary. So near the arterial end, because the other forces mostly constant in normal position. Well, what's the force that goes change and cause affect the filtrations mostly hydrostatic pressure? Because near the arterial end, this pressure is higher than the venous end. Opposite force. So the net filtration will be in the direction. Head of out or to the tissue. What will happen in the venous end? In the venous end, opposite happen. Then, in the venous end, because the blood pressure is low or uh the venous pressure is low. What will happen? The net pressure will be in this direction. Hydrostatic pressure. So there will be a return of fluid to the inside blood vessels, to the venous end. This is normally, uh this is the capillary pressure or the filtration that normally happen. There are several factors so affect the filtration. filtration. Affect it by. One of the factors called capillary constant. Capillary constant. Uh of capillary coefficient, sorry. This uh is important. Because this is indicated by the permeability of the capillary. But man normally, normally the capillary is um impermeable. Or this very slight permeable to the protein, to the plasma protein. Um but sometimes the capillary permeability increase. So if the capillary permeability increase, this coefficient increase, the filtration is also increase. Any factor that cause increase in the filtration. Uh. So as we said, we have this coefficient. This pressure is try to move fluid out. Okay. But this one try to move fluid in. So we put minus. We have another force that opposing filtration. Which one is oppose the filtration? The. Oncotic pressure. Of plasma or capillary oncotic pressure. Uh-huh. Capillary oncotic pressure is opposite filtration. So minus. This one. Plus what? Plus the interstitial fluid oncotic pressure. So in this equation and in this figure, we can see that. Any factor. But design edema to understand how edema develop. How filtration increase? As we say, if the filtration increase more than normal, edema will develop. What are the factors that cause increase edema? As we said first, when the capillary permeability increase. When the capillary permeability increase. Decrease protein cause what? Protein here decrease, it means it affect this pressure. Which is the oncotic pressure in the plasma. Plasma protein with month, this oncotic pressure develop by plasma protein. If plasma protein decrease, this oncotic pressure decrease. Kavata, when either increase permeability. Or decrease in the oncotic pressure of the plasma of the capillary. What will happen? There will be increase in the filtration. I'm a chemical enforcer. This force is increase, this force is higher than that, so the fluid will go out, more fluid will go out. So either decreasing plasma protein. Or increasing protein in the interstitial. Or increasing hydrostatic pressure due to any cause hormonal blood volume. Increase in the blood volume, increase in the pressure here. Or um stasis of blood inside the blood vessels. Make a pressure on the wall of the vessel and fluid will come here to the interstitial. Uh this will happen when there is a great amount of fluid come to here. Because normally we have safety factor. Lymphatic vessel present in the interstitial. It will try to bring any excess fluid, excess protein. Excess fluid about when our lymphatic vessels. It prevent accumulation of fluid here. But if the fluid that accumulate here, it's beyond X or exceed uh the function of the lymphatic. And exceed the homeostatic mechanism. If exceed this, what will happen? There will be formation of edema and fluid accumulate here. So that's why decreased plasma protein cause what? Cause decrease oncotic pressure, decrease movement of fluid in the to the capillary. And cause accumulation of fluid in the tissue. So this is one of the cause of edema. In which case the this protein decrease. Plasma protein. Decrease in the plasma protein caused by either decrease formation by the liver. Or increase excretion by the kidney. So these are all cause decrease plasma protein. Or decrease intake of protein. Admit protein. All these, there are other factors also, cause decrease plasma protein and edema formation. And you can see in other uh explanation question. How edema may be formed by stasis of blood here or by increased pressure or hydrostatic pressure in the blood?
Yeah. Um so the answer of this question, no need to um discuss about all these detail, but this for your under understanding. How what's the normal filtration and why edema develop? But the answer for this question is movement of albumin or plasma protein from inside the blood vessel to outside. Make what? Decrease oncotic pressure inside and increase oncotic pressure outside. So inside the vessel, oncotic pressure decrease. So the pressure that move fluid out is more than the opposing forces that move fluid in. So there will be increase in filtration. And increase um in uh accumulation of fluid in the outside and edema formation. Question seven is ask about, in what ways can membrane transport process contribute to regulation of intracellular pH? How the cell can maintain its normal pH? Of course, um there are several um buffer system, buffer system mechanism. That um um maintain normal pH in the inside the cell. Like phosphate buffer, protein buffers. Uh these buffer system are important, but when these buffer system inside the cell were exceeded. What will happen? The cell should have another mechanism to resist the um cellular acidity or toxicity. Um through what? Through the transporters. So let's see, what are these transporters? That important in regulation of the acidity or cellular toxicity. When pH uh decrease or pH increase. Of course, the most important transporter again is N A K A T Ps. Sodium potassium transporter. Um this transporter is important also to move proton and move. Um S O three or bicarbonate. Uh move proton outside the cell and move carbon, uh bicarbonate to inside the cell. In order to uh decrease um the acidity or increase the pH during cellular acidity. To resist this acidity. So what are the response of cellular acidity or how the cell resist cellular acidity? Through um activation of different transporter. These transporter, one of them is N A H countertransport or N A H exchanger. That will bring sodium in and move hydrogen ion out. And by uh moving hydrogen out, that will cause increase in the pH toward normal. And how this N A come in? If they the N A because of N ingredient, low N A inside the cell. Through what? And low N A inside the cell were made by what? By the action of N A K A T Ps. So. Another um transporter that become activated when there is um low pH or acidity inside the cell. Which is we um N A S C O three co transporter or N A bicarbonate co transporter. This again uh the benefit from the low N A inside by this N A K A T Ps. When the N A low, N A will come in and also it will cause co transport of bicarbonate with sodium. By this, it will cause increase in the pH toward normal. Another transporter which is um like a couple of both the N A H countertransport and an iron exchange. Uh an iron exchanger. It will move N A inside again by the low concentration of N A inside the cell. And it will move hydrogen ion outside. And it also at the same time, they transport all these together. Where according to the N A gradient, it will transport another three um compound uh solid. Or ions. Okay, so N A they bring N A in and move hydrogen ion out. Bring S C O three or bicarbonate in and move chloride out. So moving edge to outside and bringing S C O three to inside cause decrease cellular acidity. So increase pH. Um of course, these two are um. The it will cause the decrease acidity by acid extrusion. Um N A S C O three co transport decrease acidity by alkali intrusion. Bicarbonate, move bicarbonate to inside, so it it means alkali influx. Uh okay, but we have another uh transporter that's work uh during. Um cellular basis in order to resist the basis. Alkali influx or extrusion. So in that case, the an iron exchanger work in this direction will move S C O three to out and C L two inside the cell. Lastly, uh the last question uh is about a case study. Um you have a uh there is a female, seventy years old female. Come to hospital, bringing her to hospital, complaining of shortness of breath. And when you examine her, you found that she has leg edema. After thorough history examination, a history taking, examination and investigation diagnosed to have heart failure. Heart failure means failure of the heart, weakness of the heart muscle to pump blood. Um you described to her uh drug medication, among them is loop diuretic. After few weeks of therapy. And also you uh find the improvement in the patient in the listener, in the S O B. The patients is they have less listener and also you notice that there is less is of shortness of breath. And decrease in the swelling of the leg. Um but when you did investigation and examined for serum electrolyte, you found that she had abnormal potassium. Serum potassium level. Um these are the cases of the heart failure. Of course, they have mostly have edema uh in the tissue, fluid accumulation in the tissue and mostly in the leg. And also fluid accumulation in the lung, which is called pulmonary edema in the lung interstitial or interstitial show of the lung. According to the type of the heart failure, the fluid distribution in these parts will differ. Let's see the questions. Why the patient has swelling in her legs? Why diuretic were prescribed to her? How it improve the patient's condition? What's the mechanism of action of loop diuretic? How loop diuretic work? Why examination for serum electrolyte is important during follow up? Uh of patient that taking diuretic medication? Um what you, why we should do that? What will happen to serum potassium in your opinion? Does it increase or decrease? Serum potassium with one abnormal. After a few weeks of taking diuretics, you found that serum electrolyte is abnormal. Why serum abnormal, serum electrolyte or serum potassium abnormal? Do you think it is increase or decrease? If you decided to add another diuretic, what will you add? As you know, heart failure, as we say, there is inability of the heart or the heart um pumping ability become inefficient. So the blood remain in the heart because the heart cannot pump efficiently. And this will cause increase pressure inside the heart, inside the ventricle, inside the artery. By this, returning blood to the heart will be uh resisted by these opposing volume and pressure. So uh returning back of blood means the venous return will decrease to the heart. When this decrease, what will happen? The blood uh mostly remain in the blood vessel cause stasis. So um stasis inside the blood vessel, so increase the hydrostatic pressure. And this will cause edema, that's why swelling will happen. This is one of the cause. There are also other causes in the heart failures, several mechanism that goes increase um in the fluid accumulation. In the interstitial, among them are activation of aldosterone, running intensity aldosterone mechanism. You'll take this in the cardiovascular system, so no need for detail now. But uh only know that this aldosterone become activated because the body think that. Uh because of the decreased cardiac output, decrease blood flow to the tissue. The body think that there is decreased blood volume, but normally there is no decrease in the blood volume. But the body try to increase its blood volume in order to uh reach more blood to the tissue, to increase the blood flow. Try to increase for compensate for decrease blood flow by increasing blood volume, so retention of the fluid to the blood. This retention cause increase in the uh hydrostatic pressure more. And the fluid retention and accumulation of fluid in the tissue, so edema and swelling. How diuretics work? And uh where it work? It's work on three different parts of the kidney tubule or the nephron. Let's see this video again. Uh the drawing. About the nephrons and the diuretics.
Let's see how diuretic work. This is a nephron, a functional unit of the kidney, this is bone my capsule and this is glomerulus. A lot of filtration. Here the filtration of here, blood filtration. And the sodium and other content come to here, most of the sodium and other content come here to the. The fluid, of course, to the uh bone my capsule space. Um. It will come down, it will go through the tubule. And several um reabsorption and excretion will take place by different transporter. We have different parts of tubule, this is loop of Henley. And this is descending part, this is ascending part and this part which is thick, thick ascending loop of Henley. Which is this part and or you will um enlarge it and make a drawing of the tubular cells. Here we have distal convoluted tubule. Machine distal convoluted tubule and then we have collecting duct. The collecting duct collect urine from different um. The different nephrons, the convoluted tube of different nephrons. Okay. Cortical collecting duct, this part is called cortical collecting duct. Okay, let's see the transporter in different parts of the tubule. And I think ascending loop of Henley. If we draw the this part of the tubule. Be enlarged. This is a tubule. You'll make a cell. Of course, this is tubule, we have. This is tubular cell. We have a cell, this is a model cell and it will be like this. Okay. Let us take one cell as an example, of course, here we have also. Tubular cells. What are the transporter that are present here and then on the tubular cell? Of course, this is the basal membrane, basal lateral membrane of the cell. And this part here we have blood vessels. In order to reabsorb material to the blood. Sodium, sol- other solution and water to the.
Sodium, sol- other solute and water to the blood. It are the transporter or the transporter that present in the luminal side of the tubule. As you said, this is a tubule, this is the lumen of the tubule that fluid information. Uh take place. Okay, we have a transporter. Which is name. Sodium, potassium, chloride transporter, N A K C L two. Sodium, potassium, chloride transporter, co transporter. To co transport sodium, potassium and two chloride to inside the cell. From the tubular lumen. In order to make these nutrient, uh these solutes to be reabsorbed to the blood. And this make the blood uh osmolarity increase in the osmolarity. By this, water will follow, water will also absorb to the blood. This is the normal function of the uh this transporter on the thick ascending loop of Henley. Loop diuretic, um the most common one and the most potent one. Um and Lasix is an example. It will block this transporter. And transporter a block. It block the function of this transporter. So no N A, potassium and chloride reabsorb. Uh they uh this remain in the tubular lumen. So. N A, potassium and chloride remain here. And this make what? Make the the thread here to become hyper osmolarity. This will cause what? Draw fluid to itself. The urine uh volume increase, there will be increase fluid in the urine or the increase volume of urine. Um and there will be increase in the urine formation. And this is the mechanism of action of loop diuretic. It block N A K C L two in the luminal part of the thick ascending loop of Henley cells. What is the driving force for that? You know, we have what? N A K A T Ps. Have the primary transport of N A K A T Ps in order for this to work. To cause decreasing the sodium inside for the sodium. Um. Come in by what? By this co transporter. Okay. It has no effect uh the loop diuretic on the N A K A T Ps, but it has effect on this N A K C L two. Um uh why, uh that's why we have to do um regular serum electrolyte check. When we have um a patient on the diuretic. Especially on the loop diuretic and and the. Thiazides. Um because it will cause hypokalemia in these two situation, as you can see. The salt potassium will remain here. That's why if uh the patient take this diuretic for a long period of time. There will be depletion of potassium or maybe depletion of the chloride and so on. Um that's why hypokalemia uh is the most important one. Um because affect the heart excited ability. That's why hypokalemia should be um investigated. And treated. It will increase urine formation, which is important for the edema that she has. Decrease the fluid load. Uh decrease stasis um in the vein, in the blood vessels, um. Decrease hydrostatic pressure, so decrease edema. Um so the patient's condition improve. But what will happen is there will be abnormal in the electrolyte. That you can see that um the potassium decrease in the serum. So what you will do, you can use another diuretic. And the question is ask, what is the uh other diuretic that you can use for this patient in order to correct hypokalemia? Of course, potassium sparing diuretic. We have a diuretic that work on the collecting duct. Called what? Potassium sparing diuretic. Why call potassium sparing? Because it spare potassium, it prevent um. Movement of potassium to the uh urine. So. Let us see the. The transporter on this part of the tubule. On this cell of the tubule, we have. Of course, we have two different type of cell, principal cell and interconnected cell and the principal cell we have. Have here. On the um basal, basalateral membrane we have. What? N A K A T Ps. So this is N A K A T Ps. And we have uh different channels here. We have. Potassium channel. Normally that goes. Movement of potassium to the urine. To the filter it and we have sodium channel. That goes movement of sodium to inside the cell. We have also a different uh other different transporters. But we draw this transporter that the aldosterone work on it. Because this diuretic, which is potassium sparing diuretic, work on the receptor. Of the aldosterone or block the aldosterone. Aldosterone, yeah, aldosterone is a hormone that act on this receptor. It will increase activity and formation of N A K A T Ps. Which cause decrease N A here and. It will cause also um because of the N A and K gradient here. It will those movement of sodium and increase in the N A channel uh formation and activity. So more sodium come to inside, it cause increase in the reabsorption of sodium. Add excretion of potassium and also of hydrogen ion. So this is the function of aldosterone and if. Um anti-diuretic present, there will be also reabsorption of fluid. Because as you said, aldosterone is important, it will cause sodium reabsorption. And by this, it will the water will follow, so. Uh aldosterone cause reabsorption of sodium and water. What will happen when aldosterone blocked? As you said, this diuretic, which is called potassium sparing. Diuretic. Act on the aldosterone receptor, it block N A K A T Ps. So. It will decrease reabsorption of sodium and decrease potassium excretion. So what is the function of potassium sparing diuretic? What will happen to the here to the luminal potassium and sodium? It will decrease potassium removal. So most potassium remain here in the blood. Potassium layer is on travel because it will inhibit N A K A T Ps also. So it will spare potassium. So it will not cause lose of potassium. That's why use of these two diuretic together is important. It will prevent change in the potassium um in the serum. So what's the diuretic that you can use with this diuretic? But this is important to potentiate effect of each other and also to decrease the potassium. So we can use potassium sparing diuretic. And this is how diuretic work. Diuretic, as you said, make um large amount of urine. To decrease um at the blood pressure, decrease the volume of um blood. And decrease hydrostatic pressure and decrease edema. And let's uh see, this is not a part of the uh question. But let us see the one part of the. Tubule remain that diuretic act on it, which is called distal convoluted tubule. In the distal convoluted tubule, we have. Different part type of transporter. What's the transporter that we have here? We have the N A C L. N A, not N A K C L two, N A C L co transporter. Of course, we have N A K A T Ps here. But this diuretic not act on this, we have also N A channel. What's the function of the diuretic? Uh this diuretic which are called thiazide, it will block N A C L. This is. So it will prevent. The N A and chloride reabsorption or decrease sodium and chloride reabsorption to the blood. But that remain in the urine, this also cause the water follow on cause diuresis. Okay, so this is how diuretic work. Um I want to give you another point at another point. Here uh the loop diuretic, as we said, is the most potent one. And because most of the sodium reabsorption take place here, about one third of sodium reabsorption take place here. Well, in this collecting duct, collecting tubule, collecting duct, only three percent of sodium reabsorption take place. And uh we can give a summary for these questions. Why the patient has swelling in her legs or edema due to this stasis? Pump decreased pumping of blood and stasis of blood, increase hydrostatic pressure, so fluid accumulated. Why diuretic were prescribed to her? How it improve patient's condition? Diuretic cause diuresis through formation of dilute urine or formation of more urine. Um. Yeah, urine volume. So it improve patient's condition. What's the mechanism of action of loop diuretic? For the second question, there is no need to um discuss in detail the mechanism of action. But in this question, it ask about mechanism of action of loop diuretics. How it works? This is through on he uh of loop diuretics through. Uh blockage of the N A K C L two co transporter. So no N A N K C L two there. Blood sweat remain in the urine and cause diuresis for uh. Fluid will follow and cause formation of the urine. Uh increase amount of urine formation and. Um diuresis. Why examining for serum electrolyte is important, this we discussed? Because this diuretic affect the serum electrolyte because they act on these transporter that transport the solutes. Uh that's why investigation of electrolyte is important. What will happen to serum potassium in your opinion? As we said, in the loop diuretic, serum di- uh potassium decrease because it um excrete potassium. Uh if you decided to add another diuretic, we will add s- potassium sparing diuretic. Because it act in opposite to the loop diuretic, it increase serum potassium or spare serum potassium, prevent excretion of potassium. That's why if they both work together, there will be no change in the serum electrolyte or serum potassium. And thank you. If you have any question. Um you can um write it down in the Google classroom or send it via email to my email. On med physiology.